We do have a quorum. For this evening's regular session meeting Wednesday, March the 17th, 2021. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Scambalory?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Sandberg?
Here.
And Rallo?
Okay, well, it looks like we have eight members here. Did I miss my count?
I think Councilmember Rallo entered the room, but he's not unmuted yet, so.
Okay. Okay, he can show us his face in just a second. But for meeting purposes, there's eight of us present and Councilmember Rallo would join us and.
I am, uh, I'm here.
Okay.
Wouldn't allow me to unmute. Thank you. Hi, folks.
Hello, Councilmember Rallo. Got to love technology sometimes.
Yes.
Okay, tonight's agenda summation. We will approve a certain set of, or consider approval, certain set of minutes. Then we'll move to reports. I will remind everyone that we have a maximum of 20 minutes set aside for each part of this section. And that will include Councilmember reports. The Commission on Aging of, I'm sorry, Commission on Aging's annual report for 2020. Any council committees and then public comments. Again, I'll remind folks that we have a maximum of 20 minutes set aside for this section. Then we'll go to appointments to boards and commissions. And we have three items tonight. For second readings and resolutions. One is ordinance 21-09 to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water. And that's the rate adjustment. Number two, we have ordinance 2110. At ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the city of Bloomington, Indiana, of certain extensions and improvements to the city's waterworks utility. The issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the costs thereof, and the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenues of such waterworks utility and other related matters. And finally, in second readings, resolutions, ordinance 21-08 to amend the city of Bloomington zoning maps by rezoning 87 acres from planned unit development to mixed-use corridor regarding 3100 3100 West Fullerton Pike, BLC Brown revocable trust petitioner. We also have three items for first readings this evening. It's ordinance 21-11 to amend Title II of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Administration and Personnel Regarding Updating and Harmonizing Portions of Title II of the Municipal Code. Item number two is ordinance 21-12 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Restricted Terms on Red at Signalized Intersections. And number three, ordinance 21-13 to amend Title 15 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic Regarding Amending Chapters 12.32.080 Schedule M No Parking Zones To Remove Three No Parking Zones and Add Ten No Parking Zones And To Amend Chapter 15 dot 32 dot 100 Schedule Zero Loading Zones Loading Zones to Add Two Loading Zones. Then we'll move on to additional public comment. I will remind everyone that this section is allotted right now for a maximum of 25 minutes. Then we'll look at matters regarding council schedule before we adjourn. Okay, moving back to the agenda, are we ready to, for approval of minutes? Councilmember Flaherty, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Mr. President, I moved that the minutes for the council meetings from June 9th, 2004, July 21st, 2004, August 4th, 2004, September 8th, 2004, September 22nd, 2004, and December 15th, 2004 be approved?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and segmented that the minutes for the dates listed be approved. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Volin?
Yes.
Rosenbarger?
Yes.
Scambalory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
And Rallo?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Those minutes are approved 9-0. Now we'll move to reports and we'll start with council members. I have a colleague this evening, Councilmember Volin has asked to go toward the end. He has a report that may take up to 10 minutes potentially. And we will go with other council members' reports. If we get toward the end of that and we have less than what Councilmember Volin thinks is adequate, then he has told me that he will save those until a later time. So having said that, I will call on them as I see them on my screen. Councilmember Scambalory?
I have no report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
I have a report tonight. I'd like to report on, uh, on, uh, March 4th, I visited Beacon Shelter in Wheeler Shelter. On March 5th, I went and visited New Hope Shelter. Takeaways from the visit. At, at this time, there's space in the, for everyone who wants shelter space. The new Homeless Insecurity Work Group led by Alfred Pfefferman, Tina Peterson, and coordinated by Brittany Hert have begun a series of really promising meetings on systemic issues related to homelessness. Dana Jones, in my discussion with them, was concerned that misinformation about Wheeler was preventing people from coming to the shelters. Wheeler does not require anyone to engage in religious services for their emergency shelter and do not discriminate against anyone. Forrest Gilmore and Emily Pike both observed that low-income housing for the $0 to $400 per month is critically needed to help people move into more permanent housing. From my observation, people are attracted to Bloomington from other communities. This is a valid concern that one agency works to help people reconnect with their own communities. Homelessness camps exist in Bloomington. Beacon and Shalom both go out and try to get people to come in inside. They're outreach workers. The Bloomington Police Department has, according to shelter staff, worked very well with the staff in connecting outreach workers with people to try to get them inside. Some of my recommendations are more money. We all need to fund them better. New Hope could use the city to help partner with for about $100,000 for a couple of years to help them stand up their new shelter. There's a database that does not exist. And the shelters do not have this unified database. It'd be really great if the city could help fund that so that then we could all assess how large your problem is and what we need. Lastly, I want to say that from my experience in developmental disabilities, maybe we need to think about a new model. I observed when I went to the shelters, I talked to some really nice people and I observed that there's probably a fair amount that have developmental disabilities of some kind or have disabilities of some kind. Maybe they would be better served in a model such as a group home, which is four to six people, sometimes eight. They could become more independent. They could have a permanent address and find a job maybe. Group homes and their services are funded in part by supplemental social security income, which is approximately $800 a month. So this pays for a fair amount of, of, uh, putting together a program like that and a home. I worked with group homes when I was, uh, worked for the state for several years and the model was very successful in many ways. Maybe this needs a little bit more study. The homeless shelters in Bloomington are compassionate people. They all need our support. So thank you very much. Or let me make that report.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Flaherty?
No report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
I have no report tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Rosenbarger?
Hi, I just have a quick report. I, um, my constituent meeting is normally the fourth Tuesday, which is next week, but this month I need to change that to the fifth Tuesday. So just for any folks out there who plan on attending, the link is the same, but the date will be different. So that's going to be Tuesday, March 30th at 5:30 PM. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Rosenbarger. Councilmember Rallo?
I have no report, but I'd like to thank Councilmember Smith for sharing that information with us.
Thank you very much. We'll save Councilmember Volin toward the end. I hope we have enough time. I do have a very brief report. First thing I'd like to do is thank my colleagues, but specifically Councilmember Scambalory for presiding in my absence over the last couple of weeks. I think many of you know those on the public and maybe some don't. My family suffered the death of my oldest child, my daughter Kamisha, recently. And what I really want to say is thank you all to not only my colleagues and to the public, but all of our friends out throughout this community for their extensions of their condolences, their well wishes, their support, their offers of food. Asking, can we do things? Just basically showing the love that I would expect from our other, or those throughout this community and which I would like to thank that I extend to others as well, in particular in their time of need. Lastly, or not lastly, but the end of this part, I also want to thank our community for their generosity. We have established through the Monroe County Community Foundation a scholarship fund for nursing students in honor of my daughter Kamisha R. Sims. And I am very thankful, but I shouldn't be amazed, but it is amazing at the generosity of those throughout this community to support that effort so that we could help subsidize the education of future nurses as we move forward. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. On behalf of my wife and, um, my daughter's little brother Jimmy, for the Sims family. Lastly, what I'd like to say is when I became president in January at our organizational meeting, I had a few comments then and I will repeat them now. And I hope it's okay. I think it's important as we move along. Civility has been on my mind lately and I've shared that with many of my colleagues and others throughout the community. But when I was sworn in as president or elected as president, I did make a statement that this was not a transition of power, but a transition of leadership. And I still hold fast to that and I think, um, those in positions of leadership would agree. I would like to think so. I also said that I would like to set the operational tone of this city council of how we operate. Using these four descriptors. Collaboration, compassion, collegiality, and respect. And as I recall, when I said that, I thought it's important that we set that tone and also make sure we extend those courtesies not only to our own colleagues, but to others in city administration and their staff, to other elected officials across Monroe County, and particularly and specifically toward our public, members of the public, who are our constituents. So I hope I don't bore folks from time to time that I review and reiterate those areas that I just spoke on because I really do think it's important as we take care of legislative business of this council. Thank you for that time, Mr. Volin. Are you ready, sir?
I am. Thank you. And I appreciate those comments.
You're quite welcome. And according to my clock, you have the full 10 if you need it.
I appreciate that. I, I want to follow up on your comments because my comments are about civility as well. In your absence, the meeting of March 3rd exposed a problem that I wanted to address. I prepared a statement to that end and I'd like to read it now. On the night of March 3rd, in the hearing of ordinance 2106, some members of the public made personal attacks on members of this body. In the past, though, a commenter may have been inappropriate. We have usually let them go because it wasn't worth the trouble to stop the meeting to address it. It would have taken longer than was worth. I don't think we can do that anymore, though. We do not, as council, have an obligation to allow such attacks to stand. Frankly, we don't have an obligation to have public comment at all. If we do, we must treat everyone equally. And that means we must make sure that those people are treating everyone equally as well. I too have been remiss in not calling out personal attacks from public comment, even in the years when I served as parliamentarian. I want to urge all my colleagues to demand that the meeting, the meeting's chair, take action against anyone who would impugn the, uh, the person of another rather than confining the criticism to the person's statements or actions. And to do so every time it happens, this chamber must actively practice civility. But incivility was not limited that night to members of the public. The members of council who voted against 2106 defeated an ordinance that attempted to address a humanitarian issue. We can debate whether that ordinance or their opposition to it was the more humane act another time. But we must address the way in which they defeated it. The opposition proved on March 3rd that their regard for the humanity of anyone in attendance, even those who favored their views, was not as important as the achievement of a political goal. The opposition, time and again, refused to allow 2106 to be deliberated on at a humane pace. They didn't care about the well-being of anyone present when they allowed the council to set a record by at least 20% for the longest single regular session known to any person currently in City Hall. They cannot allow a meeting to go nine straight hours without a break, ending at 3:30 in the morning, then claim with a straight face that they care about anyone's health or well-being. In fact, the opposition had opportunities to stray from this course. They rejected a motion to postpone to another day when it was after midnight. They rejected a motion to postpone another day at the beginning of the hearing of the issue. They had multiple procedural options at their disposal. They could have continued the meeting to another day, which would prevent anyone who had already spoken from speaking again, thus shortening the total time spent on the issue. They could have sent the legislation back to committee, which would have spread the public vetting of the legislation over up to as many as three other calendar weeks. They could have moved to not hear public comment, to limit the total time for public comment and council comment, or to limit the total time of the meeting. They took none of these actions. If their claim is that they wanted to hear public comment, who besides them thought it reasonable to be hearing it at 1 AM or later? No member of the public, pro or con, would have been unhappy to have their say at a more reasonable hour. If their claim is that they felt it needed to be defeated for staff's sake, however much staff may have been against the ordinance, no member of the administration would have been unhappy to not have to be up all night. If their claim is that it needed to be defeated that night, I say why? Were they not sure they had the votes to defeat it? I'm quite confident that everyone knew what the outcome of this legislation would be very early that evening. What harm would it have done to spend four hours on it then and four hours another night? Did they not air, did they not sit through the comp plan, the UDO? They could have asked that the meeting be continued so we could pick up where we left off, as we do, for example, every budget week. If their claim is that they didn't know that they had those options, I say to them, ignorance of the law is no excuse and the law is BMC 2.04.080, which says that Roberts Rules is in effect when city code is otherwise silent on procedure. If they thought the legislation was a greater abomination than rendering it illegal for the unhoused to sleep outside, if they truly believed it had no redeeming value, they could and should have voted it down at introduction and reading by title and synopsis. That is an action that's far from common, but we've done it before and it is well within our privilege as members of council to change that standard procedure. My colleagues who consistently complain, claim, rather, to be prepared for issues that come before us were, I believe, supremely unprepared to prevent this catastrophe of procedure, which was entirely of their making. It's clear that they didn't intend to be uncivil, but incivility was a result of this disregard for procedure and for the basic human need of those in attendance. They should have known that there were many alternatives to forcing the issue at all costs. If they do not know procedure well enough to prevent the council meeting from going nine hours straight, they are not upholding their duty as council members. Over the years, even up to the present, every time I have brought up issues like this, I have, from fellow council members, received personal attacks myself, mild ones, but "time limit on everyone, Steve. Why don't you just talk less?" I would be told. Attitudes like that, I believe, led to the catastrophe of March 3rd. I will defend my colleagues on another important point. Those who criticized the opposition for being racist had it wrong. Their, the opposition's vote to proceed without Mr. Sims was not an effort to keep him from voting on it, let alone because he was black. Not at all. If there is anything to be outraged over, it was instead the hypocrisy of the opposition explicitly and repeatedly making the claim that an item should be heard in committee of the whole, putting on a fast track because it's, the item is so significant that it should be heard by all members. Because when a situation came up where one member was forced to be absent, suddenly the very people who insisted on hearing from all nine members were okay with plowing forward. I can assure the public that the opponents were equal in their disregard of everyone that night, regardless of race, color, or religion. But I will no longer believe any colleague who claims that an issue must be sent to committee of the whole because the most important issue should be heard by all nine members. This claim is obviously untrue, or they would have postponed on March 3rd. I believe it's on the opposition to put forward alternative legislation to 2106. Otherwise, I believe the blame for the continued humanitarian crisis in our city should rest squarely on their shoulders. They had a chance to do something more humane and they rejected it. But again, we can disagree about a piece of legislation, as we often do, and there's no problem with that. But I want to remind my colleagues that we are not in a private club. My colleagues who sponsored ordinance 2106 had the right to bring it. They did not need permission to propose an ordinance or preclearance. My colleagues who opposed the legislation did not have the right to be personally offended by the mere introduction of the ordinance. Councilmember Rallo's unfortunate hot mic moment revealed his personal feelings toward the political fallout of his opposition. Because of the political pressure the ordinance put on him, he later impugned the motives of Councilmember Flaherty. Several members described the legislation falsely as ill-prepared and under-researched. The three sponsors, meanwhile, never raised their voices. The opponents seemed to think that criticism of their political opinions is an attack on their persons. Such an attitude is the essence of what General Robert was addressing when he wrote his famous rules, which we by law here abide by when city code is silent. The principle is separate the issue from the person at all times. The opposition, I believe, failed to do that. They were resentful of having to address the legislation and in their fear of it, insisted on killing it no matter how late we would all have to stay up. In conclusion, let me say that despite their actions, the opponents acted within their privileges as council members to take the actions they did. In the same way that the sponsors had a right to bring the legislation, the meeting, however long, was conducted properly that night. I will also actively defend all my colleagues against personal insults from any corner and I will strive to be on top of it from now on. That I, for one, did not do enough to defend them against spurious and unfounded accusations of racism does not, however, make me culpable for their politically motivated procedural choices. Their actions and their refusals to act that led to a 3:30 AM finish were an attack on the collegiality of this body and an act of contempt, however passive, towards their colleagues and towards the institution of the council that must never be repeated. March 3rd was disrespectful to everyone. The opponents owe this body, I believe, and the public, an apology for their blatant disregard for the well-being of every person present in the name of achieving a political goal and a promise to never let it happen again. It's time for my colleagues' better angels to report for duty. My colleagues all need to embrace the spirit of council procedure and of Roberts and must commit to ensuring that meetings never again end at an unreasonable hour. I do believe, though, that despite everything that led to the present moment and despite any implications that could be drawn from my statement tonight, that all of my colleagues are people of goodwill. They want to do the right thing. I appreciate Councilmember Smith's report tonight as a good example. I believe that they have respect for every person who would engage with council and want to ensure that this body conducts its work with a collegiality that is crucial to the public business. I appreciate the extra time for this report. Thank you.
Mr. President? Yes, President? I strongly object to the characterization of the opponents of that ordinance and would like the opportunity to rebut at our next regular session. Thank you.
Duly noted. Thank you, Councilmember Volin, for that report. And before we move to the next phase, we do have a few seconds. I observed throughout the last calendar year during my colleague, Councilmember Volin's presidency, where he pretty much reserved the last council comment or any spoken word he reserved to himself as a president. And that's fine. I just hope that you can respect and appreciate the collegiality that was shown to you this evening by the chair by allowing you to take that last spot. And that is my comment.
I appreciate it.
You're quite welcome. I do believe now we are ready for the report from the Commission on Aging's annual report for 2020. Presented by Mr. Phil Stafford, I do believe. Is Mr. Stafford present and ready?
Yes, thank you very much, President Sims. And I extend my condolences as well to, over your loss, to you and to Doris. Your daughter Kamisha. My, my, my daughter had been hospitalized multiple times over the last five years. Kamisha never failed to come visit her in the, on her floor, even when she was not on her floor. And we, we, I, I don't know her directly, but I know that she was a marvelous human being as are her parents and the rest of her family. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry.
The Commission appreciates the opportunity to provide an annual report to you on our work this past year and our thoughts about going forward. I have some slides and I think Stephen has arranged for me to share my screen. I'd like to, to point out that Jenny Donigan and Jack Khan commissioners are, I believe, on the Zoom meeting tonight, as is Sue Owens, are terrific liaisons. And so I appreciate their presence. Let me share my screen and see if we can. Does that work?
I don't see anything. There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. I'll try to be brief because I know in, 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 in the context of of the previous discussion, I know your time is valuable and we certainly appreciate the contributions of time that you make to our, our community. The commission, as you may have, may know already, is constituted by ordinance to develop study committees addressing the concerns of seniors in the community, to encourage the development of programs that benefit seniors, to apply for grants with the approval of grant applications by the city, to serve as a catalyst to promote positive public and private remedies to the most multifaceted challenges confronting seniors in our community and to celebrate the contribution seniors make to the Bloomington. and to celebrate the contribution seniors make to the Bloomington community. And my slides are a little texty. I apologize for that visually. They're not fascinating, but they have good information and they'll be an official part of the recording, I presume. And I believe you may have the paper or digital version of our annual report as well for your records. These were the twenty twenty members of the Commission. Were really fine group of people. With loads of experience, devotion to the subject. We've had, we've lost three this year, one to a move out of town and a couple to, to family and other work obligations. So we're down three. And frankly, I don't know whether those are mayor or city council appointments for sure. But if they're city council appointments, I would like to emphasize that it's important for us to have appointments done so that we can work at full capacity. Back in February of last year, pre-pandemic, we, we appointed three commission members and began a discussion about the idea of convening service providers to seniors in the community to begin networking them, communicating with them regarding needs and concerns that they're encountering in the work that they're doing. I won't go through each of these because you're quite capable of reading them, but we would have been with, at the senior expo as we are each year and at the Bloomington Street Fair. Both of those were canceled due to the pandemic, as was an idea we were floating around to try to be a catalyst for the development of intergenerational choir in the community. We began earlier in the spring then talking about an agenda for a service provider roundtables, identified stakeholders who could participate and realized in April, when everything became virtual, that our roundtable was going to have to be virtual as well, as well. We have long been involved and not continued to be involved and intend to stay involved with discussions around the development of the old hospital site. And to try to hold, hold close to the call in the comprehensive master plan that the site be developed within a lifetime community framework. That's extremely important to us and a lifetime community is a community that supports people of all ages and abilities. And we have an opportunity with that site to do something quite remarkable, to have a, a site that meets those goals. So that's extremely important to us. We have been discussing for some time the idea of a, of a survey of seniors. We have not started that, but we've been looking into models. We have been involved with the Dimension Friendly Community Conference since its inception, which goes into its fourth, maybe fifth year this spring with a virtual conference in May and a person-to-person conference in the fall. So we'll continue to stay involved with that. I published an editorial column in the H T around the COVID crisis and the subtext of ageism, which was part of the public discourse around the COVID crisis and the vulnerability of older people that was in some ways exacerbated and held up as a problem, if you will, and with respect to the COVID response. In June, we set dates for the provider roundtables. We had our first successful roundtable in three, actually three sessions with twenty service providers in July. And it was very, very fruitful. The issue of social isolation among older people emerged as a primary concern among service providers. And as you'll see, we continue to stay involved with that issue. We heard from Chris Jackson of the Public Library and participated in providing input into the strategic planning that was going on for the library last summer. In September, we completed a report of the roundtable, which was distributed to the participants. We, we heard from Brett Molnar, who is the lead for the W T I U. Conference on Aging and intend to stay involved with that wonderful program annually. It was, hadn't had to be digital last year, as you might have guessed. We got involved with the City of Bloomington Digital, Digital Divide Survey and Project Jenny Donigan, representing us as a technology consultant with input into the strategic plan to address the digital, digital divide. And in helping educate ourselves about that report, Rick Dietz of the, of the city provided a report to us on the digital divide survey. And we discussed planning for a roundtable on the digital divide in this coming year. Let's see here. Yeah, so that takes us to this coming year's objectives. We hope, we would like to do service provider roundtables on a quarterly basis. But the first one has already been scheduled in April and it will address the digital divide. And in, again, in three sessions on digital access, social isolation and innovations. Will stay involved with events, important community events that we have been actively involved with and advocate for the, for the notion of the lifetime community. And will continue to provide leadership for and continue to support community efforts around improving digital access and digital literacy for seniors. I should, I should add that with the March sixth meeting of the council, we have pricked up our, our ears actually around homeless issues and are looking into a position statement on homelessness that's relevant to the Commission on Aging, borne out by the reality that many homeless people are older adults themselves over fifty. And sometimes encountering the vicissitudes of age at an earlier point in time than most of us are, are doing. And so it's certainly an issue that's salient for the, the Commission on Aging, and we hope to get more involved with that in the coming year. So that's, that's, I think that's the end of the report. I want to, again, we want to thank the city council and the mayor for their, their support of the Commission on Aging. We are devoted to this work and hope that when there are issues that emerge that, that touch on the well-being of older people in our community, that she'll look to us for input and leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford, for that report. Thank you very, very much. Okay, moving on to more reports. Do we have any reports from council committees? Seeing none, we'll move to public comment. If we have any, I will remind everyone that you can use the raise hand function in Zoom to indicate that you have a public comment or you could send us a note or send the meeting host a note through chat. And I would also remind, if we have more than one person on a device for public comment, please let us know so that we can properly recognize all who wish to speak. I also will say that I do believe, well, set aside for a maximum of twenty minutes. So we'll just take it from there. Do we have any indication of how many people would like to speak?
It, it appears that the person using the screen name R M., who I believe is Renee Miller, is the only one using the raised hand function. And then I also believe that we have one other in the direct message, and it's unclear to me if Ms. Washburn wishes to speak now or during the presentation or discussion of one of the ordinances. And Nathan Muchler has also raised his hand. So we have a total of possibly three.
I think so far we have two. I think the, the one is comments having to do on legislation that's on tonight's agenda. And there will be time to comment then. Okay. So seeing the two, we can allot five minutes, I think. Renee Miller, are you ready to speak?
She should be able to unmute.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. You have five minutes. Hello.
Hi. Hi, Mr. President. Mr. Stafford's work with the aging community and his report was wonderful, and I wanted to thank him for that. And I'm, I'm not going to speak on that tonight. I would just really like to address the meeting in which you, yes, Mr. President, and I'm sorry for your loss. The tone of several of the opposing council members, and I'm not attacking anyone, this is as a whole, really did set the tone for the public in a lot of ways too, and I just want to make that pretty clear. There were some quite unprofessional in nature tone used by two specifically. And both being condescending, but also invading other council members as well as the public. And I am not proud of the way I was baited. And I want to publicly apologize for my words after being baited endlessly by that, those council members and going on and on and on for hours. It was a terribly unhealthy situation for all of us. And let's hope that doesn't happen again because we didn't get, we didn't get anywhere at two thirty, three o'clock in the morning trying to have conversation, that's for sure. Having said that, I don't think it is for our council or anyone else other than people that are experiencing homelessness and their case managers, if they have them, to suggest that they go into group homes. I'm kind of shocked by that as a possibility coming forth out of one of the council members' suggestions. But I do appreciate the fact that he did visit some shelters and I wanted to thank him for that. Because that, that is showing more than I've seen so far. So thank you. I think that's all I really have tonight.
Thank you very much for your comments. You're muted.
Next up, we have Nathan Muchler.
Oh, Nathan Much.
He should be able to unmute himself at this point.
Hello, Nathan. Can you unmute yourself? Okay. And we're free and clear from our end. Is that right?
We are.
Ms. Lacy. Okay, thank you. Do we have?
I'm sorry, I, I'm at work and I was called away, but I'm here now.
Okay, good evening. You have about five minutes.
Thank you so much. First off, I want to start with Councilor Sims. In my tradition, we say, if your daughter, may her memory be for a blessing. I didn't have the privilege of knowing her, but hearing so many people speak so warmly gives me confidence that her memory will be for a blessing. I would next like to thank Councilmembers Flaherty, Piedmont Smith, and Rosenbarger for bringing ordinance twenty one oh six. It was, as we all saw, a difficult ordinance and hard conversation. But an important one to have, and I thank you for bringing that forward. I want to thank Councilmember Bolin for his statement and for really articulating from a very technical standpoint what I think went wrong at the last meeting. Regarding the report, thinking about Wheeler Mission, I always think back to the night that I was at Seminary Square as they were sending a bus around Wheeler Mission. And there was a gentleman who'd been going through a rough time and had really get him into a tent where he could try to make it through the night. And a Wheeler Mission employee, you know, but said, hey buddy, you want to come? Come stay at Wheeler? And the man said, no. And as they laughed away, as they walked away, the Wheeler employees laughed and said, do you see that? His feet were fucking purple and laughed. There's an old joke, Croucho Marx said, who are you going to believe, me or your own eyes? So I would challenge the council, don't listen to what Wheeler Mission says. Listen to the people who say with their own eyes and their own mouth that they feel unsafe. They feel unwelcome and they feel uncared for at Wheeler Mission. It's easy to say you're welcoming to all. It's another thing to make everyone feel welcome. I would like to ask again, in what world would we ever say that Bloomington being an attractive community to any individual or any group of individuals is a bad thing? I think we should take pride that people who are down on their love, people who are having maybe the worst time of their life, come to Bloomington because they know our community can help make it better for them. The Bloomington City Code Human Rights Ordinance includes housing status protected class. Would we say it's a problem if Bloomington was a community that was attractive to Jewish people like myself or people of color or gay people? Why is it a problem that Bloomington is an attractive community to people who are experiencing homelessness? None of us are entirely racist or anti-racist. A person can't be a thing. We do have actions. I myself take actions that upon reflection, I can say, Nathan, what you did there was racist or Nathan, what you did there was anti-racist. To believe that being called on our actions and language is tricky. So sometimes when we need to say, council member, that action you took there was racist. We say, council member, you are racist. Language is hard. We should all, myself included, do better. But to take offense, to reject the idea that you as a person could possibly do wrong when someone calls you racist isn't, that in itself is a racist act. So let's all try to be a little more anti-racist in our actions. And think about when I'm doing this, am I taking an anti-racist action or not? Finally, I would like to ask, when the winter shelter closes in about a month, where will the forty-five people who are sleeping there sleep? Probably nowhere, like the city says. These people are my friends. These people have spoken before this council. And they deserve somewhere to sleep. Thank you. I yield my time.
Thank you, Mr. Muchler. Ms. Lacy, do we have any more takers?
Don't believe so.
Okay, thank you very, very much to those who spoke publicly. We'll now move to the next item on the agenda, appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments to any boards or commissions this evening? Okay. Seeing none. Moving on through the agenda, we do have legislation ready for second reading tonight. Councilmember Flaherty.
President Sims, I move that ordinance twenty one oh nine be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
Thank you. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Sorry, I was having a little, a little trouble unmuting myself on that one.
I understand.
Yes. Councilmember Rosenbarger.
Yes.
Scambulatory?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Sandberg?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
And Volin?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. And that passes nine oh. It's been moved in second that ordinance twenty one dash oh nine be introduced and read by the, by the clerk by title and synopsis only. It's been moved in second that ordinance 21-09 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only. Did I do that incorrectly?
Nope. Are you ready for me to read?
I am.
Okay. Ordinance 2109, to amend Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water Rate Adjustment. The synopsis is as follows. This ordinance amends the rates and charges in Title IX of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Water to reflect increased costs of supplying water and services to customers and to make debt service payments on bond financing for required capital improvements. You do not have a committee recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Mr. President, I move that ordinance 2109 be adopted.
Second.
Thank you. It's been properly moved and seconded. We, do we have representatives? I see Mr. Kelson here this evening. Are you the only one presenting on this ordinance, sir?
I will be presenting on this ordinance. I have a number of members of our staff and the contractors that assisted with the work who are here to help answer the questions.
Thank you very much. Please proceed.
Good evening, council. I'm Vic Kelson, the Director of City of Bloomington Utilities. I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk with you about our 2021 Water Works rate review. We are not, we're, we've been working on this for quite a while, as I'm sure you know. I'd like to introduce members of our team. Laura Pettit, who is our Assistant Director for Finance. Brad Schrader, who's our Assistant Director for Engineering. Brandon Prince, who is Assistant Director for Transmission and Distribution. Those are the people who deal with the pipes. James Hall, who's our Assistant Director for Environmental Programs. We also have Chris Wheeler from City Legal, who represents the utility for the Legals Department, and Latrina Teague, who is a part of our administrative team. Tom Axon, Assistant Director of Operations, is absent tonight. We also have Jennifer Wilson from Crowe. They did the financial analysis for the rate review. Mark Beauchamp of United Financial System, or Utilities Financial System, sorry, who worked on the cost of service portion. And Buzz Krone of Krone Associates, who will be talking about bonding requests, which will be actually the next item. Just a little introduction about CBU for, for the public and for members of the council. We are three utility systems. We have Water Works, the Sewer Works, and the Stormwater Utility. Tonight, we are only talking about the Water Works. We're not talking about Sewer or Storm. All of our functions are paid for by the customers via the water bills. We do not receive any tax revenues at all, and we do not provide revenue to the city's general fund at all. Our rate-making practice has been amended somewhat in recent years. Working with council and the administration, the council has asked us to bring rate reviews on a regular basis every three or four years. We've settled on a four-year rate cycle, which would be the Water Works we intend to do in presidential election years and Sewer and Stormwater in the midterm years. Of course, last year we had a pandemic, so we delayed this rate review owing to that, to that dislocation. Water Works rates are different from the other rates in that the rates that we charge for water are approved by the Utility Service Board, then by the Common Council, and then have, they have to undergo review and approval by the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. Sewer and Stormwater rates are, only have to go to council. Our Water Works has about 25,000 customers. And we have, and seven of those customers are rural water companies that are wholesale customers. We have one treatment plant, Monroe Water Treatment Plant down at Lake Monroe. We have over 430 miles of water pipe, seven storage tanks and booster stations, and over 3,000 fire hydrants. In 2016, we brought our last rate case. That was actually the year I joined the Utilities Department. Our main objectives that year were stabilizing our finances, improving drinking water quality. At the time, we were dealing with issues of elevated disinfection byproducts, although we didn't go into violation, the levels were higher than we wanted them to be. We also needed to do a lot of vehicle replacements, pump replacements, and other process equipment. We, that whole review resulted in an across-the-board increase of 22%. We have three major goals that were involved in, that drove our capital spending in that program. The first one was the development of integrated asset management for our utility. This is now actually required by law under America's Water Infrastructure Act of 2018. That law requires that we have an asset management system in place that lets us monitor and manage the lifecycle cost of everything we do. That is required if we are going to ever seek state revolving fund financing, which we haven't in the last several cycles. Anyway, we've implemented the City Works Asset Management software, which required a migration to SREARC GIS. And we are now deploying it throughout our system for all of the linear assets. That's pipes, manholes, fire hydrants, and so forth. We're going to, we're deploying that this spring, and we will deploy it in the plants in the spring of 2022. The biggest impact for our customers is the implementation of advanced metering infrastructure. We changed over 27,000 meters and the project was completed under budget by about $1 million, which was great. That required that we touch every single meter pit in the city and every single meter in the city. These meters are now read remotely by antennas that are in fixed locations. We can read all of the meters in the city in just a few minutes. And that simplifies our billing, makes things more consistent in our billing, and allows us to collect data on a more, on a higher frequency, which means our customers now can access a customer portal that allows you to look at your water use on an hour-by-hour basis. There's a link on our website for how to sign up for the customer portal, and we hope everyone will do that. The other thing we did in that rate case was we established a water main replacement program. Nationwide, water main, aging water main infrastructure is a huge problem. And over, I've read numbers from $3 to $5 trillion worth of water main replacements that need to happen across the country, and we're no exception. About a quarter of our pipes are 75 years or older. And they need to be, we need to be replacing them, both to prevent main breaks, preserve water quality, and so forth. We established the program at a nominal level of about $1.7 million per year. What we found is that with that much money, we can replace a little over two miles per year. And we have been taking on these projects in various locations in the city. I'll talk more about that in a little while. We also, as you, it's a big operation, so you're always going to have some capital spending that you didn't anticipate when you did the rate case. In our case, we had two big ones that were almost $2 million. The first was discover, the discovery of lead in the soil at the dire, former dire tank site. That's up near Mills Pool. And it, we had to do site remediation at, at that site to take away all the soil that was lead contaminated. That site is now being cleared by IDM and the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. And it has been turned over to the Bloomington Housing Authority for a future early childhood facility. But the big one was the Griffey Water Treatment Plant, which was shut down in 1996. The Griffey Plant has suffered a lot of vandalism over the years, and there was mercury contamination throughout most of the building. So it cost us $1.6 million to clean it all up, tear down the plant, and dispose of all of the, of, all of the materials there. So it, it was a big job, but now we've got a lovely field down there that's been planted with native prairie grasses. Throughout the whole effort, we have been implementing cost-saving measures in our organization. We do an annual assessment of our vehicles as we do vehicle replacements. We do try to purchase the most environmentally sensitive and the most cost-effective vehicles we can. We've done LED lighting projects in most of our facilities. We've implemented the solar, solar generation at the CBU Service Center, the Monroe Water Plant, and at our southeast tank, and also at some of our wastewater facilities as well, but this is focused on water. Of course, I mentioned advanced metering infrastructure. When, when we can read the meters without leaving the building, we don't have to send meter readers out driving around the city every day. So that's, that saves us operating costs and reduces our carbon footprint. We've also been developing standard operating procedures throughout the organization and training our, our staff to follow them. In transmission and distribution, we've implemented an improved yearly parts and inventory assessment. And as part of our city work system, we're going to be taking steps in the coming years to reduce the amount of inventory we keep on hand and manage things on more of a just-in-time type fashion. In operations at the plants and the tanks, we've been replacing aging and inefficient motors at the Monroe Water Plant and also some of the variable frequency drives. We've also are in the process of deploying a laboratory information management system that will help us coordinate our laboratory information more carefully. It will also allow for a lot of automated data entry from instruments in our labs and also from our outside laboratories. Engineering is working on paperless plan review. They're working with Planning Department and others in the city to do all of our plan review without having to print large documents. We have now allowed C900 plastic pipe for water mains up to 12 inches. And we're now allowing polyethylene pipe for the service connections instead of copper. So that's less expensive material to work with. And our finance group has renegotiated the credit card fees to lower our transaction costs. And we've implemented an on-call contracting program for small contracts under $25,000. This simplifies the process and helps our board be more efficient. So why are we doing a rate case right now? Well, the first, there are three basic categories of reasons that I'll talk about. The first one is, we need to do it on a regular basis. Council's asked us to do it. It's just good management to do it that way. We did, as I said, Sewer and Stormwater in 2018 and 2019. We had planned for water in 2020, but COVID-19 delayed about everything. IURC wants us to file within about one year of the end of something called a test year. That's a representative year that shows the, the general cost of operations for the whole Utilities Department. Now, we'd originally planned on a test year that ended at the end of 29, at the end of 2019. But when the rate case was delayed, we moved the test year back three months to end at the end of March of 2020. Now, after that point, that was when IU was shut down and our water sales were, had fallen, were, were falling. And we could, we knew we weren't in what I would call representative time. So our test year ended on March 31st. We're now getting close to the end of the runway if we want to file with IURC by the time we're right around a year past the end of the test year. So we're doing this right now because, because of that. Secondly, the 2016 rate cycle is ending. And what I mean by this is that when we go and do a rate case, our sales really don't increase very much from one year to the next. What that means is that once the rates are set, we will get approximately the same amount of money every year. The way we do our budgeting, we budget every, every bit of our anticipated revenues, personnel, supplies, contract services, and debt service. Those are all budgeted for at budget time, as you know. Any remaining revenue or cash on hand is designated as extensions and replacements, and we use that for capital improvements and various replacements. But what happens is, over time, the, the personnel, the supplies, contract service will tend to, to increase with inflation. But the other thing, and what that does is, since the revenues are flat, E&amp;R tends to go down as we go along. And if you go long enough without doing a rate case, you get to the point where you start scavenging from other operations or simply not replacing things because you don't have any E&amp;R money left over. That's more or less where we were in 2016 when we did that rate case. So it's important to understand that if we're going to robustly and reliably manage our system that we be able to maintain a decent E&amp;R budget every year. And council's been very helpful in recommending that we do this every three or four years. In 2016, that rate case was implemented in two steps, in 2017 and 2018. Since 2017, the NR, the amount of money available for E&amp;R has declined from about $5.3 million to about $2.1 million. We are hoping to complete about $8.7 million in capital projects in 2022, and some of that will be from bond proceeds, as you'll see. The biggest driver of the, the increase in real terms, however, for the rate case is really the water main replacement program. Currently, it's underfunded. We have over 430 miles of pipe. We can replace about two miles a year. That's more than a 200-year replacement schedule. Water pipe service life is typically about 75 to 100 years. And we're trying to get to the point where we're doing 100-year replacement schedule. And this has got several components. One is that we want to do more of the work in-house, which saves costs for using contractors. But that's why we think we can, if we go up to ultimately about $3 million per year, we should be able to get close to the 100-year replacement schedule that we're shooting for. It's very important for everyone to understand, this isn't a one-time project. We, when we come and ask for expanding water main replacement, we're trying to set a baseline that will continue year by year because it takes 100 years to replace the, the entire distribution system. So this is part of the cost of doing business that we simply haven't been doing for the last 100 years. And we want to take care of our system. Here's a graph that shows graphically how this has worked out. You'll see our E&amp;R spending. We don't, we budget all of the available dollars for E&amp;R, but we don't necessarily spend it each year. So things have been mostly pretty flat until this year. And if you see, the Griffey demolition really took a big bite out of the dollars we had available for 2020 and 2021. Another way of looking at that same trend in the, in the rate cycle is you'll see, we get to 2021, our revenues are down in 2021 because of the pandemic. And we see that our E&amp;R is, is really being squeezed. So I'll talk briefly about our capital plans. We can talk more about that at, at the end, if you wish. We have three major, we have a number of small projects, but we have three big ones in both the, the treatment plant and the distribution system. On the treatment plant, we want to make improvements in the sludge dewatering system. This has become a critical part of the operation as we've stopped chlorinating in the summertime to prevent disinfection byproducts. We want to replace the filter media, which is old and has become degraded. And our standby generators need some renovation and repairs and improvements, and that will be almost $3 million. In the distribution system, we want to coat and rehabilitate the east tank. Actually, IURC has requested that we do that. That tank does need to be, does need to be coated, and you'd be surprised at how much it costs to paint a water tank. Rehabilitate the south central booster. That's the one that's right next to our service center. And then, as I've said before, we want to increase investment in water main replacement to $2 million in 2022, two and a half in 2023 and 24, and then up to $3 million in 2025. And our hope is that in real terms, it will be about $3 million per year plus inflation in the future. We also are in the midst of developing a master plan for the former Winston Thomas Wastewater Plant property to assist in meeting future facilities requirements for the Utilities Department. Capital improvement plan has a lot of numbers in it. I won't go into them in detail, but you'll see how the calendar works out. 2022, we want to do the dewatering system improvements. 21 and 22, the filter media and underdrain replacement in the plant. And then there's the roughly $3 million for the standby power improvements in 22 and 23. On the distribution side, there's about $1.4 million in '24 for the, the south- the South Central Booster rehab. The east tank will be, uh, in twenty-two and twenty-three, uh, costing nearly a million dollars. Uh, the engineering is done on that, however. And then, uh, you'll see the numbers for the water main replacement as it grows. Overall, they're seeing numbers of something like eight point seven million dollars, uh, in, in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then, uh, trending downward again, as you would expect, as we get, uh, later in the rate scape, uh, the rate cycle, uh, will be back down to around four million dollars by twenty twenty-five. Uh, we will be proposing to sell, uh, bonds to, uh, finance several of these projects. This will move them up on the calendar, uh, from, from, to allow us to get them done in a timely fashion. We will be talking about that as the next item on the agenda, I do believe. So let's talk about revenue requirements. The capital improvement plan, uh, has, uh, all the projects that I talked about. Uh, we also have, uh, increased operations and, uh, man, maintenance expenses planned for throughout the system. Uh, and then, uh, the in, extensions and replacements to sustain the, the, uh, water main replacement program. Altogether, a, a revenue increase of about twenty-two point two percent, uh, is required to achieve the goals of the rate case. About a half of that is the water main replacement program. Uh, you wouldn't, we don't expect to be uh, making increases in that, uh, in the, in the future in real terms, at least not at this point. We'll review that as part of the next rate case. Uh, here's an overview of how those, uh, revenue requirements break down. You'll see that, uh, debt service, both the old debt service that's in green and the new debt service that's in purple are shown on here. Uh, debt service is one of the largest individual categories of expenses that we have. Uh, and simply because that's how you fund, uh, all of the infrastructure that's required to run a utility. So I, I meant to, uh, mention where we end up in terms of revenue. Sorry, uh, is that we're shooting for getting up to about, uh, nineteen point seven million dollars in revenue in twenty twenty-two. Uh, and then in phase two, that would take us up to about twenty-one and a half. Now I want to talk about cost of service. Um, we've undertaken a cost of service study this time. And what cost of service pricing is, is that, uh, it's based on the principle that we charge what it costs to provide the service. Uh, the council, um, might remember, some, some of the members might remember that in twenty eighteen, when we did the last sewer rate case, we actually did a cost of service study for sewer, uh, in which we created two customer categories. That is customers that are, uh, reside within the city of Bloomington and customers that don't. Uh, for water, the customer categories are based more on the usage of the water. And, uh, AWWA, that's the American Water Works Association, has published a report M one, which is, uh, it outlines how the industry, uh, how the industry proceeds with developing the cost of service. Basically, the idea is each customer class, whether that's, uh, the wholesale customers or irrigation customers or residential customers are paying what it costs to provide the service to that particular category of customer. Right now, uh, our overall pricing covers the cost of operations, but our rates for the various classes are inconsistent with cost of service pricing. And we do, uh, wish to take steps to establish a cross-the-service-based pricing model, which is what the IURC wishes for us to do as well. What we find in the cost of service study, I guess what's important here is looking at this as two phases. Uh, the first phase, uh, would take place in twenty twenty-two. The second phase would happen in twenty twenty-four. And as you see, remember that the revenue requirement was twenty-two point set, uh, twenty, twenty-two point two percent increase. But you'll see that for the cost of service, looking only at the commodity charge, that's the number of dollars you pay for a thousand gallons of water. Uh, residential customers would be looking at the cost of service increase of about sixteen percent. A commercial, uh, governmental and interdepartmental would be about thirty-three. For industrial customers, it would be about fifty-one. Wholesale customers about thirty-three, uh, Indiana University would be about forty. And then our irrigation customers are the ones that are way out of whack, and it's about a hundred and sixty-five percent increase to get those up to cost of service. What I, the thing that's important to take away from this chart is that the cost of service study has shown that our residential customers are subsidizing all the other categories of customer. Now, once we've got the, uh, the, the numbers for, uh, how we, uh, for the, uh, the revenue requirements and the cost of service information, our contract, we worked with our contractors to design a rate schedule, uh, that meets the objectives of the, the revenue requirements while getting us as close as we can to, uh, to matching a cost-of-service-based pricing. And the way we've done this is, uh, we looked everything over and first of all, we saw some of those large increases for customer classes. What we did was we structured each of the rate changes so that no category receives an increase of more than twenty percent in your phase. Uh, what that leads to is we have all the categories, uh, of, except for residential and irrigation would be at cost of service after phase two. The residential and irrigation usage categories will still be inconsistent with cost of service, but we'll address that in, in future rate cycles. We're also recommending that the commercial and industrial categories be merged into one. The reason for this is that we have a lot less, uh, when our categories were designed, uh, decades ago, we had a lot more industry in Bloomington than we do today. Right now, our industrial customers are less than a tenth of our commercial customers. And what that means is that if an industry comes into the city or leaves the city, a, a large industrial customer either comes in or goes out, that can have a real impact uh, on a very short-term basis on the rates for all the industrial customers. Uh, we'd like to stabilize that. And the way we propose to stabilize it is to merge the commercial and industrial user classes. So after we complete the, uh, the, the rate design, uh, we're finding that, uh, there will be an overall increase for residential for metered sales of twenty-one point seven percent. We'll talk more about that in a moment. Uh, thirty, almost thirty-three percent for the commercial governmental, interdepartmental, and of course, that would also include the industrial customers, who would only go up forty-three, forty-four percent instead of fifty. Uh, wholesale customers would go up thirty-three point one. Indiana University would be thirty-nine point seven, and irrigation would be, uh, two twenty percent steps to get them, uh, uh, for a total increase of forty-four percent. But there's more to your water bill than just the metered charges. We also have charges for, uh, for the meters themselves and for fire protection. I'm one. And those are also added in. And the way the, we've structured this is that the increases for, uh, residential customers for their site charge, that's the metering equipment, and for the fire charge, that's fire hydrants, uh, will be much smaller than the twenty-one percent or twenty-one point seven percent increase for metered sales. What this leads to is that the average Bloomington customer, uh, would see an increase of about three dollars and seventy-four cents per month for their water bill. Uh, that's about an eighteen percent increase. Uh, a customer that uses one unit or one thousand gallons a month would only see an increase of about a dollar seventy-one, and that's about a fifteen percent increase. The state, uh, meet, measures things by looking at, uh, an average of five units per month, uh, which would be again about a nineteen, eighteen point seven, uh, percent increase. This is all based on a five-eighths inch meter. This is, a lot of our older homes in town have five-eighths inch meters. If you have a three-quarter inch meter, uh, the increases would be more like, uh, thirteen percent for the average customer, uh, average Bloomington customer, um, seven point eight percent for a, uh, for a residential customer that only use one unit, and the state standard, uh, would be around fourteen point eight percent. So these numbers are all significantly lower than the overall, uh, revenue requirement of twenty-two point two percent. Basically, we're shifting the burden off of our residential customers onto other categories of customers in order to achieve cost of service. Uh, one question is where does this put us in comparing, comparison to other communities in Indiana? Uh, right now, we're right about at the top of the bottom quarter of utilities that serve twenty-five thousand or more. That's both, both private and municipal companies. We would move up to just a little below the fifty percent mark in the state, uh, in terms of our pricing. But what you see over here in this left-hand column, uh, about four or five of the cus, of the utilities that have rates similar to ours are also involved in rate-making right now. So chances are we would still end up somewhere around the top of the bottom third, which is where we were at the end of the last rate case. We've done a lot of work to make sure that this was communicated as clearly as possible to everyone. Uh, we've sent, uh, bills, bill inserts and e-bill, uh, inserts on both February and March. Uh, we started publicizing this on our website in January. I had sent a press, the first press release on January fifth. Uh, we've held open houses for our largest customers. We personally, I've personally reached out to the, the largest customers in each customer category. Uh, we've been holding meetings, uh, in an ongoing basis uh, throughout the year up to now, uh, all the way up to tonight. And, uh, we did have a meeting with our wholesale customers as well. Our calendar is being slowly checked off, so we're, uh, down to, uh, second reading with council tonight. If we, uh, council approves of all of this, so in the next few weeks, we do expect to file uh, with the IURC, uh, but before, uh, April fifteenth, uh, the, the commission will, uh, hold public hearings thereafter. And the commission has three hundred days to rule on, on the case. So presuming we file uh, sometime in April, that basically gets us to the end of twenty twenty-one, uh, before we get approval. So uh, we would anticipate that, uh, that we would be, uh, through the IURC process either sometime in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-one or early in the first quarter of twenty twenty-two. I think it's important also to talk about what comes after this because, uh, a lot of times you look at this and say, well, okay, so they're gonna do this rate case and then it's all over. But of course, time goes on. And it's important to think about where we are in terms of the capacity of our system and also the other things that are going on in our industry. One thing that you'll find interesting, or certainly we find interesting, is that our water use in general has leveled out uh, as a utility since about twenty twelve. Uh, as population grows, that means that our per capita usage has been tending to go down. Uh, some of that is probably because of, uh, less industrial demand, but I think a lot of it's also because of, of newer buildings with higher efficiency fixtures and also a lot of the apartment, apartment buildings tend to have, uh, customers that don't use as much water. So, uh, we're, we seem to be seeing some benefits of, of, uh, of conservation and, uh, and we're very happy to see this. So we haven't had another, uh, another maximum day like we did, uh, back in twenty twelve when we had the severe seasonal drought, uh, that we actually outpaced the capacity of the plant for several days. And that's, that's a real problem. So, uh, we're moving, uh, into the future with, uh, with a plant that seems to be sized about right for, for our current, current demand. But improving the resiliency of our waterworks is, uh, is what we're always working towards. Uh, our next rate review, we're expecting to be bringing in twenty twenty-four. Uh, the EPA has published a new lead service, uh, lead and copper rule that requires, uh, replacement of all the lead service lines, uh, in the city, uh, over the, the coming decades. And basically between now and, uh, twenty twenty-four, the biggest job we'll have will, it will be to identify them all because they're all underground. You gotta dig a hole to find them. Um, so that, that effort, uh, is spinning up right now and we'll be continuing that. But, uh, right now, we don't have a funding plan comprehensively to, to deal with lead service line replacement. Uh, and we'll talk more about that in our coming budget, uh, processes, uh, but how we get rid of all the lead. Uh, we will continue to have capital needs at the Monroe Plant. Uh, again, we are going to be looking for more efficient pump, pump, uh, equipment and, and motor drives. Uh, we will continue refurbishing tanks and booster stations. That's just good maintenance. And, uh, as we go into the next rate case, we will review to see if we've achieved that hundred-year uh, schedule that we were shooting for, for water main replacements. Uh, and then future rate reviews down the road, uh, obviously we'll be looking at more process improvements for water quality. Uh, we may just start taking actions towards developing a second source of supply, whether that's a second plant at Lake Monroe or perhaps, uh, a, a source of supply that's somewhere else, uh, maybe a groundwater source, uh, in the White River Basin. So I'd like to thank everyone for their time and attention. I know it's been a long presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions that anyone has. Thanks.
Thank you. I was trying to upsize my screen, but I couldn't do it until you quit sharing your screen. So again, gotta love technology. Uh, thank you for that report. Um, we'll move to questions from council members. Um, council members can blur.
Yes, thank you. Um, Mr. Kelson, thank you for the presentation. Thank you to, um, to you and who's ever appropriate for the good work you did at the Griffey Treatment Plant. Um, it is so nice to see those hazards gone and to see a, a more natural state there. So thank you for that. Couple of general questions and then a specific one, which I may save. You talked about, um, some of the outreach you've done to constituents, and thank you. I appreciate your including that slide. Um, I know we've discussed it in my constituent meetings. Could you share a bit about what kind of part, what level of participation you saw? How many people took advantage of those? What kind of feedback did you get? Uh, could you talk more about just constituent feedback?
Uh, generally, the, the meetings, um, were, and I think part of it's pandemic. We didn't have as many people in the meetings as, as we may have had in, in previous go-rounds, although they were all, uh, on Zoom or Google Meet. And we did, uh, we have had, uh, had a number of people in each of the meetings. Uh, most of the people we've talked to have, have acknowledged the need for uh, the things we're doing and appreciated that we, we actually have a design plan for how we're doing water main replacement because it's we, you really have to think long-term about a project, a problem like that. That's a hundred-year job to, to do it. And I think by and large, people have accept, have been, have been accepting and approving of that. Um, some of our larger customers, uh, have concerns, uh, by the cost of service portion of the analysis. Um, and perhaps, um, would like us to do something different. Um, but, uh, we're trying to just get things in line as best we can. So, uh, by and large, uh, it's, we haven't heard a lot of negative comments from, from anyone.
Okay, nor, nor have I in my conversation. So, um, a second question, obviously, we've had some water main breaks lately, and that's kind of been hard to miss, you know, and, and, and hard to ignore. Um, I appreciate what you've done with the replacement schedule. You also talked about changing materials of pipes. You talked about, for example, we wouldn't have to use copper anymore because we'd have polyethylene pipes and so forth. Um, I, I'm assuming we didn't have polyethylene a hundred years ago, but what do we know about the anticipated lifespan of these new materials? How's that gonna affect what we do?
It's, the anticipated lifespan is comparable to the, to the older materials. It, and, and I'll just be a little, to be really clear about it is when we talk about distribution mains, historically, those were the old, old ones are cast iron. Actually, if you go back far enough, you'll find, uh, wooden pipes that the city actually had, and every uh, once in a while, we still find them. Uh, but, uh, we actually have a sample of that at the service center. Uh, but most of the larger, older mains are, are cast iron. The newer mains are mostly what's called ductile iron. Um, we have had some corrosion issues with ductile iron in some locations, um, which is one of the reasons for looking at the, the plastic. Also, plastic is lightweight, easier to handle, uh, and has been shown to be reliable in, in water service. So the, the plastic mains, um, are big, thick, blue pipe. The other part of the, of the system, though, are the service lines, and that's the, the line that goes from the main to your home. Uh, and it goes first to the meter pit where the meter is. That part of the service line belongs to us. The other part of the service line from the meter to the home belongs to the homeowner. And there was a long period of time in the twentieth century when, uh, when lead was the when lead was the standard material for making service lines. And fortunately, we'd never had any lead distribution mains in Bloomington, although some of our cast iron pipe had a little bit of lead at some of the joints. But some cities had a lot of lead pipe in their distribution system, which is a huge problem to replace. But we do still have a lot of residents who may have lead pipe in their homes or may have a lead service line. And part of the EPA's program is to encourage people to get rid of all those lead service lines all the way to the house, which is a costly operation. And I don't think there's really an industry standard approach to that yet. And I certainly hope that the federal government will come up with some sort of program to to help offset the cost of that because that's a big burden for repairs to carry.
Sure. Thank you very much. That's helpful.
Thank you, Councilmember Scambler. I believe Councilmember Volan has his hand up.
Yes, thank you. I have a bunch of random questions, but I'll take a couple now. There was a report, Mr. Kelson, of several mains bursting lately, the past week or two. How many, how old were the mains that burst?
Some of them were very old and some of them were from the 1970s, I believe. The ductile iron pipe, as I said, there's a, there's some ages of ductile iron pipe have not been as reliable as the cast iron that they replaced. We, we don't know whether it's the nature of the pipe or whether it's the nature of our soils. We do have corrosive soils with all the all the clays that we have here. The other thing is that some of that pipe may may, it just may be the composition of the pipe. Over years, the ductile iron pipe manufacturers have now now recommend polywrap. So you actually put a plastic wrapper around the pipe before you install it. And now new ductile iron pipe is going is being installed with sacrificial anodes so that you can do prevent galvanic corrosion from from the in the soil, just like you would with, say, the 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 foundation of a building or a structure for a tower, tower or something like that. So they were a variety of ages. We do have a team at CBU that analyzes main break data. And we have a lot of it going back a number of years. What what we see in terms of patterns is that cold weather, when you have cold in the winter time, the water gets cold, which means the pipes shrink. When the pipes shrink in length, if you imagine you've got a thousand-foot pipe, if it shrinks, you know, you know, a hundredth of an inch per inch, that's still or a hundredth of an inch per inch of pipe, that's still gonna shrink a foot or so on the on a thousand-foot main. So you can have pipes open up because of that. We also, we we also found just recently that we had a failure in the data collection system that reports to our operators what's going on with the pumps. We can, the operators at the Monroe plant operate the pumps. And it appears that there was on one morning when we had three breaks, there was a circumstance where that system was providing incorrect feedback. And we may have, one of the operators appears to have turned on more pumps than were needed. And what can happen when you do that is not so much overpressure from the pumps themselves, but what happens when you turn on a pump, you get, you can get something called water hammer. You'll get these very short duration spikes in pressure that might be hundreds and hundreds of pounds of pressure. And we suspect that that morning we may have had that the water hammer may have led to some of those main breaks. We do have equipment that we're deploying through the system to watch for water hammer in the vicinity of our of our different pumping stations. And we're going to continue to work on that to try and eliminate any kind of mechanical things that could be causing issues. But water temperature, there's not a lot we can do about. We just have to continue to do main replacement.
The follow-up question to that is I understand that C900 pipe is essentially an alternative to, an alternative standard to cast iron pipe. But could you go into a little bit more detail about the significance of its implementation at CBU?
Well, the biggest thing is it's not, you can't corrode it. It's plastic. So there's a and the biggest improvement over over the ductile iron pipe is is that we won't have to worry about corrosion issues with it. It's also lightweight, easier for for crews to deal with it in the field and and easier to manage.
I guess I meant, like, I know that you're replacing iron pipe with PVC, but is there some particular significance to C900?
Oh, it's just, it is just the classification of the of the pipe. There's lots of different kinds of plastic pipe. There's plastic pipe for sewers and C900 happens to be a standard manufacturer's designation for polypropylene, polyethylene water pipe.
That clears that up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Councilmember Rala.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson. We've discussed in the past about growth and of of city adding number of units in in the city and in the past, we had, we had a circumstance where, in a sense, we were subsidizing that growth. And the cost of pricing, the cost of service pricing was one means to remedy that, as I recall. But what I'd like to know is you, I think the second or third to the last slide, you show the water usage per day, which I assume was in the the vertical axis was millions of gallons per day usage. Is that correct?
That's right.
So we were averaging about 20, 20 million gallons per day.
That's the the top line. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. Well, I guess. Well, what what I gathered from that is that we've had a steady usage, which is to your credit, because it's probably a consequence of conservation and so forth. But as I recall, the expansion of the Monroe County or Monroe, Lake Monroe Water Treatment Plant does have a limit. I can't remember what that was, if it was 30 million gallons per day. And I wondered, as we reach that threshold, at some point we will, are the costs of, for instance, that we essentially are we subsidizing growth in the sense of eventually we'll have a very big ticket item in expansion of that treatment plan? And and will it be at the born at the cost of repairs? In in the service of future repairs or is it, or are there some means by which that cost is internalized to the to those new customers, if you get my drift?
Yes. The the, I just clarify that graph, the blue line is our peak day. So you size your your infrastructure for the peak day, so the maximum demand. We had, we've had been in the 23s and 25s a few times. The, our average day is more like 15 million gallons per day. But you're right, eventually, with growth, we do anticipate that we'll get beyond our, we'll get up to the point where as we were in 2010, we were getting pretty close to having peak days that exceeded the plant capacity, which at the time was 24 million gallons per day. Right now, our capacity is 30 and someday in the murky future, we probably will be looking at another plant expansion, perhaps up to 36 or something like that. The, we do have, we have reviewed all of our connection fees on sewer and water to account for new connections are supposed to be paying their share of what comes, what expansions may have to happen in the future. And that goes into our, into our connection fees. We, we can still review those again, perhaps next year, or when we look at, when we look at sewer, but we are not making any change to the connection fees in this rate case.
Okay, well, it's something to anticipate and and discuss then. And my other question was about annexation, anticipating that municipal boundaries will will and and will that affect responsibility of the extensions and replacements?
For for us? You broke up a little bit there, but I think I've got. For water, water is actually different from sewer. Annexation really is a sewer issue more than it is a water issue. The reason for that is that traditionally sewer is extended to urbanized areas that are annexed. And we have a number of sewer customers that are not in the city, which we hope we we've taken some steps to encourage voluntary annexation in the circumstances. Someone wants to get a new sewer connection outside the city. For water, our our service area is really mapped out. The, we have a service area that's drawn on the map. Those, those wholesale customers of ours that then sell, resell water to other customers, they also have their own service areas and the service areas don't overlap. You don't get to choose whether to buy from us or from Van Buren Water. If you're in Van Buren Service Area, you you buy from them. So in terms of geography, annexation really won't affect water that much, except for if we do infill or additional development in portions of the of the of our service area where there's more development. So if there's redevelopment of properties that have been, there's a number of big developments that have been proposed, those redevelopment efforts will lead to additional water demand in inside of our service area. If we were to annex the three donut holes over on the west side, those are already in our service area. So we would only see increases if that area, if areas there were developed that aren't currently developed.
So what about replacement, though? What about replacement of pipes and so forth? Is that, will we assume any additional responsibility?
We will not, because those pipes are already ours. Those those areas are already served by us.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Pete Mo Smith.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to inquire about the the fund that's available for people who are having trouble paying their utility bills. And also in the context of the pandemic, I know there was a period where there were no disconnection notices or shut offs happening. And if you could give us an update on that and then also on the fund and availability of of assistance in the case of, you know, people struggling to to pay their bills now, let alone when the the rate would go up.
I'm glad to talk about that. We have a customer assistance program that is funded by the Utilities Department and is administered by the South Central Community Action Program. They actually do all the means testing, so the utility is not choosing one customer over another. That fund can pay for customers' water bill. Trying to remember, it's, you can get it up to twice in a row. And then you've got to take four months off and then you can get it up to twice in a row again. So over the course of a year, it could potentially pay your water bill four times. We have talked at the beginning of the pandemic, we did talk to our board about the eventuality that we might want to loosen the rules a little bit for that. We've not experienced the need to do that. We are still consuming the the cap money at about the same percentage as we have in past years, although council raised the budget for that in 2020 to from 40 to $45,000. And so we have not had any trouble with solvency in that fund. Similarly, with with disconnections, our policy on disconnections is that, well, certainly, we want to, we don't want to disconnect people's water. But we do want to get people who need help to sign up for the the assistance program. And one of the ways you can do that is via a disconnection notice. I mean, that's when you, some, sometimes people don't know these things are available and you have to get their attention. That doesn't mean we necessarily go out and do disconnections. Our goal isn't to disconnect so much as it is to get a conversation started so that people can be paying what they can. So during the pandemic, we've been extremely flexible with payment plans and and things like that to to try and make sure that we don't have a situation where people are who've lost their jobs or whatnot or simply disconnected. That's, that's not what we do.
So is the moratorium on disconnections, is that over now?
Yes, it's been over since last fall sometime.
Have you seen an increase in disconnections?
Not really, not compared to normal times.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
We do, we have seen an increase in the number of people who are behind by more than two months. It's not a huge increase, but we have seen an increase in that. But as I said, if if you're working with us and you're paying what you can, we're not going to disconnect you. We continue, we do continue to work with customers. Our goal is to not let you get so far behind that you simply can't pay the bill.
And so from what I understand, when a disconnection notice goes out, information about the assistance program, about payment plans also goes out at the same time to that customer.
Exactly. A disconnection notice is essentially tell people, please let us know what's going on. Essentially, we want to know how we can, how we can keep, get you back, get you paid off over time, because these are, these are tough times. You certainly don't want to make make things worse for people by by turning off their water. We want to work with people to keep their water on. So if they're taught, if if someone is talking to us and and taking steps to set up a payment plan, that's really, that's enough for us to keep them, keep them connected. As long as that conversation is going on, we're not going to turn them off.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Kelson, for the presentation. I appreciate that the, that we're trying to move closer to the cost of service by customer class and that we had a a report that tried to identify and and point out cross subsidies between those classes. Did that report, in that study at all, were cross subsidies or subsidies within customer classes considered at all? And is that something that City of Wilmington Utilities has discussed?
No, I don't believe that's part of the standard methodology, but I can ask Mark Beauchamp from UFS to speak to that.
Yeah, I'm on, can, oh, let me turn my there we go. That was partially addressed, Mr. Flaherty. It's, the reason is because you have two components to it. One is a commodity charge and the other one is the usage component. So by setting the customer charge or the facility's charge correctly, it helps to reduce that that interclass subsidization. It doesn't totally eliminate it. To to try to get further, you'd have to get into more like seasonal rates or make the rates more complicated. And most utilities don't necessarily want to go down that path. But it is a step in that direction to somewhat not just correct the cross subsidization between classes, but also it is an attempt to try to reduce the cross subsidization within the class itself. Hope that helped to answer that, but it didn't totally eliminate it.
Sure. And and maybe I'm just thinking specifically within the residential subclass. Can you describe maybe the different types of factors that might lead to cross subsidy of a sort within, with, you know, within subgroups within that residential class?
Well, okay, I'm gonna try to give you a general. You have in a residential class, you have in a sense, and they're usually lower use customers are very flat, where the usage is very, very consistent throughout the year. So and then you have residential customers that the usage will fluctuate throughout the year. That can be because of seasonality, could be because because of summer sprinkling. Well, when you have flat usage throughout the year, their capacity and their usage is in line, so to speak. So the rates tend to be lower in total from a cost perspective. Where when you have those higher users with the fluctuations in their usage, they're using more capacity relative to their average usage throughout the year. It's, it's, we call it load factor in a sense in the industry. Their load factor, usage of the facilities is better when they're consistent users, which tend to be lower use residential. All right, I know I'm only, it's without getting too. it's yeah, I can probably, might even take it offline if you really want me to go deeper than that.
No, I appreciate that. I, I probably do have a few follow up questions and I'm happy to just follow up via email with Mr. Kelson and maybe.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
And I'd like to point out also, we have generally speaking, two customer classes for residential, for single family residential. And that's the, the three quarter inch meter and the five eighths inch meter. And structurally speaking, those five eighths inch meters are serving, generally serving older properties when homes were smaller than the homes that they're building today. So if you've got a, a home that you tend to be a lower, a lower user, you, and you have a five eighths inch meter, you're, you're, you're actually paying a little bit less than the person has a one inch meter and simple, or a three quarter inch meter. And the reason for that is we don't have to have as much infrastructure to push as much water as that meter will carry as you would in a three quarter inch meter. So to some degree, that does eliminate some cross subsidization.
That's correct.
Maybe one small follow up actually that you touched on. And that's the type of thing I was thinking of is meter size, but also like amount of infrastructure in terms of miles of pipe, for instance, or feet of pipe per capita and the types of development patterns and land use patterns and how they affect you know, that type of cross subsidy as well. But if, if it's better to have that conversation offline going on, that's okay, too.
It can get complicated. We do, we, we do, for, for multifamily properties, we do want them to have a master meter. So the, so if it's an apartment building, it may have an eight inch or a ten inch service line, not a three quarter inch service line. So we don't put, you know, we don't have fifty meters in the basement of the building. We may have a four, a four inch or a six inch service line and a fire line and just one meter. So in that case, it's borne by the, by the property owner, not by the individual customer, individual residence.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Commissioner Kelson. I think you were saying that the impact on individuals might be three dollars and something per month. Does that mean, and is that for phase one and for phase two?
No, that's overall.
Thank you, that's, that's overall. And so if we didn't do this, what, what would be the impact and on the system in five or 10 years? Or what, and what might be the impact on, you know, rates in five or 10 years?
Well, if, if, if we don't, if we don't continue to fund the utility, what will happen is well, we've seen it this year. There, we had a fairly robust capital plan, plan for 2021. But both because we have the revenue, we had a revenue decline owing to the pandemic of about seven percent. But also we ended up spending 1.6 million dollars on Griffy and $250,000 on the Dyer tank site. So those dollars weren't available. So there's, there are projects that we had hoped and planned to do this year that aren't being done. And in fact, we took a bite out of our, our water main replacement program this year. Instead of 1.7 million, we only budgeted 1.2 million because we had projects that we just simply had to do. What will happen is over time, if we're not keeping, keeping up with things, we'll get into circumstances where we're going to be putting things off and putting things off to the point where maybe we don't replace or repair everything. So, for example, there was a time when we had one of the pumps at the intake was not available. So we had a plant that could make thirty million gallons per day, but without that pump, our, our real rated capacity was really more like twenty something because our capacity, the way you calculate the capacity of the water, of the water plant is by how much water can you make with the largest pump turned off? So instead of having a capacity of thirty, we had a firm capacity of something like twenty one for the time that that pump was out of service. So if that pump is out of service for an extended period of time, you know, owing to the fact that you don't have the money to fix it, well, then one day that twenty six million gallon per day peak day happens in the summertime and you don't have the ability to pump that much water. So you really do need to make sure that you're keeping things maintained, you're keeping things repaired, you're, you're improving the quality of your distribution system and so forth.
Does that, does that mean somebody's going to turn their tap and they might not have water come out?
It's more likely that what would happen is what happened in 2012, when we had the peak day that was maxing out the plant, we had about a week of peak days that the plant was basically maxed out. At that point, Mayor Cruzan asked for voluntary watering restrictions for a period of time. And Bloomington being Bloomington, everybody responded, responded to it. So we never really had a shortage per se in that circumstance. We didn't have a spot where you turn your tap and nothing came out. But your options for things like watering trees or watering your grass or whatnot, those might be, we may be in a circumstance where you'd have to restrict that simply because we didn't have the equipment to, to pump everything. The other thing that happens is eventually, it's like everything else in the world, eventually you have to pay for it. So if you keep going year after year after year without a rate increase, when you finally do one, it'll be a shocker. It might be a sixty percent rate increase or a fifty percent rate increase or something like that, which is the sort of thing that's really difficult and really hard on the customers. So what we're trying to do and councils, council members have taken a strong lead on this is doing rate reviews on a regular cycle. So, so it looks more like inflation to, to the customer base. And what we're, and what we're seeing is we do, we do an increase for water and, and then two years later, we do sewer. And then two years later, we're doing water again. That helps prevent rate shocks and it keeps things, keep things on an even keel.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Actually, Councilmember Volan or Rollo will get you on the second round. I do have a question. Mr. Kelson and Mr. Beauchamp may be helpful with this as well. We were talking about C ninety pipe and that's on the water side. And you said that's not the same on what we use on some of the other sides. And I guess, and maybe this is something you can share with me later, just to educate me. I had a sewer line replaced and they use schedule forty. Is that the industry standard for sewer lines? And at some point, let me know the difference between water lines, schedule or C ninety, schedule forty, some cost differences or why we use differences. So that, that don't have a lot to do with the water right now. Or if you can do it real quickly, I'll listen.
Actually, I think Brad Schrader is on. He's our engineering director and he, he can probably give you a quick summary of the different kinds of pipe that's come up before. So are you here, Brad? There he is.
Hi Brett.
Yeah, hi. Hi, the main, the main difference we find is the water pipe is high pressure pipe. It has to be tested 200 PSI. Where your sewer pipe that you'll find, unless it's a force main, doesn't have to have that level of pressure. So it can be a thinner walled pipe and not quite as sturdy. So the C nine hundred that we use for water is really rated specifically for pressure water pipe.
Okay, so it's helps contain our, our, our hammer effect better in, in one aspect.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And water is delivered, we need that pressure delivered. And so, you know, we're sewer flows by gravity, so it's not under pressure.
Okay, thank you very much. My next question, Mr. Kelson or whoever chooses to do this. We were talking about the, the smart meters and the insulation, which I think was a great thing and very much needed. But what I heard tonight is that some of the capabilities that this meter can provide, it can monitor your usage. And one of the important elements, I thought, of the smart meters was that on a consistent use basis, it, it kind of reads what your consistent use is. Let's say three units a month. And then it spikes up to six units. And the meter can pick that up. But the customer, how does the customer know that? Unless they sign up, so they have to sign up through the customer porter, portal in order to take advantage of that that benefit? Is that correct?
Actually, well, there's actually two ways. One way, clearly, yes, sign up for the customer portal. You can set your own limits. So for example, I've got mine set up so that if I use more than a hundred and, a hundred and fifty gallons or maybe it's more than 200 gallons in a day, it sends me email to, to let me know that I had a high usage. And, and it actually works. I had a, I had a toilet running and that's how I found it. I got an email from, from the, the system to tell me that I had a toilet running. The other way that it happens is historically, if you go back before we had smart meters, you we would go out and read the meter once a month, nominally once a month. We go out and read the meter and all you normally use two or three units and all of a sudden you're using 12. Our, our reader will go out and read that, come back, and that would be flagged as a high usage. Well, you might have been using it that rate for four weeks by the time we found it, right? And we would contact you to tell you about it. We might even, if we can't reach you, we might disconnect it, especially if we see evidence that there's water flowing out of the ground, because we don't want anybody to have to pay for water that they didn't use. Now, these systems actually record alarms and provide alerts to us and our meter, meter service staff gets a report every day that shows meters that are showing an abnormal usage pattern. And we can reach out to you on the shorter timeframe, even if you're not on the customer portal. We can, if, if we get the information, we can try to reach out as soon as we find out about it. So we've had that happen a few times and, you know, I think it's a great benefit. One of the great things about smart meters is that if we manage it properly, it will save everyone money because it doesn't, it doesn't take a lot of water loss to do a lot of damage to your home. So it may be that that $600 water bill is painful, but it's nothing compared to the carpet that was ruined in the basement room or the drywall you had to replace or the mold that you had to get rid of or whatnot. So what we do, we do track those and we do reach out when we see them. But you can also do it yourself.
Hey, thank you very, very much. I think that's very important for our customers that may not understand that, or the public that are customers. Do we have second round questions from my council colleagues?